Can you hear? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh, she's gonna hear us. She can't hear us. Let's test. I don't know if there are enough, it's that I'm wondering if there was, I was ostracized because I wanted to table him by myself.
Kind of. That's pretty good.
Just kidding.
Well, I didn't know that at the time, I couldn't find him for a minute.
Nothing. Well.
Where is he?
He's in the corner. I'm going to guess the whole night behind the Halloween.
How do I?
Diane's behind the Halloween cards.
Honey, don't.
It's just you. It's cool.
Yeah, he's not a guest.
Yeah, bro, good evening. Well, she just texted me a lot and she couldn't. That might be helpful.
I'll take them too. Between the two, it's moving the most.
He's switching platforms and both platforms are on the moment.
Steven? Oh, it's ridiculous. My other ones, I never had the platform, but.
I need to invent a last that has most steamy for boxes. Give rich quick.
The one with the valve in the trunk.
What one?
The one with the valve in the trunk. It's this one.
I shut the bed down and just lose those?
Probably that's the better idea.
Is that what she can hear me and I'll reiterate what?
Yep.
I'm trying to just close it up and off.
But what do you want her to do?
She's fine where she's at.
Oh, uh, they're gonna switch, they're gonna switch over to a different way, but you should be fine where you're at.
I'm not opening the meeting.
Because it says he's gonna open it from here. So you should be able to hear. So if not, let me know. Okay.
Yep. Where can the buns go? Tell her to read John.
Rejoin. She said, she thinks she can have her unit on purpose. Rejoin.
Can you hear me now?
Just me there.
I can.
Okay. We're just gonna do it this way.
We got a couple.
Can she hear the rest of herself?
Yes, I can hear Diana, it's good. And just tell me out so that I know who's.
I'll reiterate throughout, okay?
Tell her I'll take notes, take notes too, just in case we miss.
And Diana's gonna take notes as well.
Thank you, Diana.
I'm gonna go ahead and set the tone down.
Okay, thank you.
Can you still hear me?
Yep, yeah.
Fabulous.
And we also have a live streaming component available.
Yeah, I can't give more minutes, I can't come and pick back about it. Now I wish I had that. I told her not to because I had all my, all my tablets.
All right, it is six o'clock, let's call this, uh, village council meeting to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Wales?
Here.
Bishop?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Nino?
Here.
White?
Here.
All right, let's all stand for the touch. Our touch is to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Seeking approval of the amended regulations.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Miller.
Support.
Support by Larson. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Here is, moving on consent agenda, board members can request certain items to be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. A motion is then in order to adopt all those items not removed. After that motion is passed, discussion will occur on those items previously selected for removal. Anyone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion by White, support by Diana. All those in favor?
I, yes.
Anyone opposed? Here is, at this time, we have room for brief public comment. Um, if anyone would like to, please step up to the podium. State your name, place of residence, disclose any financial relationships within the village of Kalcaska, direct comments towards myself, and limit to three minutes or less. Any public comment this evening? We do not, okay. Um, I did receive public comment from Deb Follow Day, but she would like me to read that in during the discussion of Christmas in Kalcaska, so I will proceed with that at the proper time. We have no presentations this evening. We'll move on to, uh, finance committee report.
We met on October 12th at five o'clock. Went over the current invoices, payroll reconciliations, monthly payroll, journal entries, tax reconciliations, and also reviewed a draft employment agreement for assistant managers. First, we would, I'm gonna motion. For to pay the bills. The invoice amount was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. The amount due, sixty, or sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. So I'm making a motion, I'll pay the sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion by Miller.
Second.
Or third. Any discussion? We'll interrupt, please.
Yes. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Nino?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Wales?
Yes.
So we had a discussion. And reviewed the draft agreement, employment agreement. For assistant manager, and I would make a recommendation. To accept it.
I'll support.
Motion to support, we have a discussion. Yes, I'd like to discuss. So I'm just confused in this. This has nothing to do with Mr. Popa. Uh, I think he's very qualified for this, I think we are. We are rushing this. And I feel that we went from a very part-time position to now a full-time position with a lot more pay, and I. I. I think we need to table this until. Well, at least after the election. I just don't see them, the reason of paying for something that we've gone without. And there could be other qualified people, and again, not saying that Mr. Popa's not qualified, he certainly is. But if there is a position that comes available, then we should go through the proper channels and interview and get hired. So that's my position.
Senator Paddell, please.
Well, the, the position is not becoming available, it's actually existed now, as you know, of course, for almost two years. And, uh, Mr. Popa's worked alongside me closely for almost the last two years. Covering the ropes of village management. I also don't think this is a time to, um, to pull back, we need to ice it to grow. We need to have, um, continuity of government in place. Continuity of government has been a topic that I brought up with council many times, and we've tried to establish it throughout the office and to our elected officials as well.
That's it. From, from my perspective, I feel that, um, this would be right in line with everything that we've already done up until this point. We have put other people in positions in the office, we've made a deputy clerk, we've made a deputy treasurer. Um, we have got everything in line for the future, and this is just one more element that I don't think we want to let go at this point. I think that, um, Aaron's deserving in that he put the hours in. Um, he's learned the job, some position, the time, he's gone through zoning training, he's, you know, he's learning each position, and this is just part of that natural transition so that when it is time for the current manager to retire. We're not in a lurch, we're not looking, we're not seeking something. We have somebody already in position with the same, um, goals in mind as we, um, currently do. Um, and can keep moving forward in that momentum that we currently have. Um, dollar amounts, I'm, I'm not sure where the dollar amounts came from. I know that there is a part-time dollar amount that then rolls into a full-time dollar amount when the, um, exchange of managers would happen, and that's written in there, but, um. The. Numbers, the derivative for the numbers, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I already.
Did you?
Okay. If I could, there's also, yeah, there's also another element regarding continuity of government, and that was awkward to discuss, but I got a health issue. Uh, that may or may not, um. Impact matters, and I want to have a continuous government well preserved.
Okay, so the, the numbers that, that are proposed here, which are effective dates, twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one, to be compensated at a rate of thirty-two thousand, and then as of one one, twenty twenty-two, the rate of compensation will increase to sixty-four thousand, which is double. This, this, uh. This is taking, maybe I'm, I'm not understanding this, is this taking place on those dates, or if? If he was to assume the role of. Uh, village manager. This is, says assistant village manager, so we're going from an hourly rate to a thirty-two thousand dollar a year, then to a sixty-four thousand dollar a year, is that what I'm assuming?
That is correct.
Except there is no hourly rate.
There is none, it's a ten ninety-nine position right now.
It would be made into an employee instead of.
Anything else? Mr. Larson?
Okay, so he's doing paid for police. And. Now he want paying for this other job. So is he giving up? Has he given up the police?
No, he's doing that in addition too.
Well. That's in addition.
Correct.
Lot of money you're talking about with that, and you all want.
That's really not the point, the point is, he's one of the two jobs.
Pay a lot of money for something.
For two jobs.
Yeah, for two jobs. Why should he have two jobs, he's not, he's not doing one job now.
Council member, I do five positions.
He doesn't have to play sports, he's doing anything, come here, look at the report. He is as a. Why are you paying him for it? You're paying him for assistant manager. What's he doing in here? What are you doing for your job that you need assistant manager? I don't go for it, I think it's. Plenty of money, and on top of that, I think it ought to be advertised if you're gonna have a manager's position open. It should be in the paper. If anybody wants to apply for it, you ought to be able to apply for it.
So we should start over?
Not a handpicked job.
So we should start over? And possibly hire somebody that has no idea about our community, that has no idea how to run a village? That's what we should do?
There's people out there that are qualified. That have the ability to do the job. Attend to it.
I know. And I know how much actually managers make. They make way more than Scott or what would be offering lieutenant.
They don't make as much.
Yes, they do. I will print you out proof.
I disagree with you.
Bob, I think you brought up two points that need to be addressed.
I'm not considering arguing with everybody about it. That's my take.
No, but you did bring up two points that need to be addressed.
I'm not going to argue about it.
You said, he's not doing his job as lieutenant.
You just don't promote somebody because, oh, he's qualified. What's he qualified? What? Does he have?
What degree do you hold?
That makes his qualification for a village manager.
I have a bachelor's degree in public administration and a master's degree in administration.
Oh, that sounds like a qualification. So as a lieutenant. What do you achieve duties?
Mr. President, I, I have a question, Mr. Larson just responded, not necessarily. If you have a master's administration and a bachelor's in public administration, what exactly necessarily is a qualification? A master's is the highest degree you can get before you have a doctorate and a bunch of letters behind your name, I don't understand the, uh, the comment.
I'm arguing.
I'm not arguing either, I'm asking for verification of comment.
I would say like we're blunt to the fact that he said that lieutenant's not doing his job, so currently your job duties are?
I think he's basing that on the fact that my name isn't on the complaint sheet, and that's correct, as the sheriff or undersheriff's name are on their complaint sheets, and the director of the state police's name isn't on their complaint sheet either. There's a lot of work that requires office time. I'm in this office so those guys can be out doing their jobs. So if someone has to do the administrative part, that's me. My job is to keep them on the street working. Thank you for that remark. Do we have any further discussion? Angie? Would you?
Yeah, certainly, take a roll call. Alice?
No.
Larson?
No.
Miller?
Yeah.
Nino?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Wales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Did you have anything else, Kathy?
No, that was it.
Reports from other committees. Personnel?
Okay, we met on September twenty-fourth, um, myself and Harley and Damian. Again, this was done live straight. And our agenda was to review the health insurance renewal plans for the active employees, discuss budgets at the hard cap. And the medical priority health, four point eight six decrease in the rates from last year, if anybody can believe that. We actually had a decrease in insurance. That's, hasn't happened in, I don't think, three years, like, ever more. Insurance has always gone up. And we discussed the COVID credit received from priority health for premiums billed in April of May of twenty twenty. And the recommendation of the village is to disperse the credit amount of three thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixteen cents received from private health evenly between the tiers, single, single with spouse, single with children and family, and increase last year's contribution by that amount. So I'm just gonna quickly go over this, what we're gonna ask or vote for in the committee is to do, approve that amount in order to be dispersed in the sense. Um, very little difference from two thousand nineteen, if you need to know those numbers, I do have those as well with me tonight, but the numbers for this year will be for all employees, for the single, the medical, um. Amount will be used as support funding will be three fifty-four, eighty-four. For singer, with a spouse, seven ninety-five, sixty-five. Children, with children, four fifty-two, point zero one. And a family policy would be nine seventy-nine, fifty-five. And the dental and the vision are all going to stay the same as they were last year, there's no, no difference in the amount, which again is unheard of. Um, so it's, it does my heart good to come to the village with something that's positive. You know, the COVID was horrible, but there's one positive thing, a lot of summer employees gained a little bit more money out of that, so, and it's a good thing. So again, I would like to make a motion that we disperse the credit amount of three, four, five, five, point one six received from private health evenly amongst the tiers, and increase last year's contribution by this amount. So that would be approving the amounts that I've written in the minutes, please, for the defined cap.
I'll second it.
First and second, we have any more discussion?
Yeah, I think you did. I made a motion.
I seconded it.
Second, man, Miller. Any discussion?
She did second.
Yeah. I just need discussion.
Sorry, I was writing down.
No discussion? Angie, was that sufficient for your motion?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, can you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Larson?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, did you repeat, Larson is?
Yes.
Thank you. Miller?
Yeah.
Nino?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Wales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Anything else in personnel?
No, that's all we had for right now. Alex and Rip.
Good evening, we, uh, had a quick update meeting two weeks ago to make sure that we were on track for everything that needs to be done. We discussed the projects upcoming for Chucker Park. Uh, Mr. Bishop posted a community cleanup day on this past Saturday in the morning. Uh, doing some stuff around the park, around the community, uh, with, uh, volunteers, we have some things lined up for the spring for the big cleanup. Uh, this coming spring is the CTA remediation period, um, that we're on, we're scheduled to go and clean and reseal and redo the chips in the park, so. Uh, we're looking at doing a little bit of a facelift over there, looking at some ways to make it more accessible. Um, those plans will be ongoing until we get into the spring. Uh, discussed the escape park project and the bottle drive and getting some volunteers together in which to get all the bottles converted in the cache so we can get that into the budget for that project.
Did I hear something on the news about that now, they gotta take them in, they can do them up to twenty-five dollars?
Well, they had it at twenty-five dollars, the only problem is we have two grocery stores in town with two machines each. Usually the machines are broken when you get it now, everybody else is trying to take back their eight million dollars at the same time, so it's very slow going. Um, and then we talked about just things that need to be tackled this coming year, there's nothing that needed to be, uh, decided by the village at this point, we're just getting our ducks in a row to tackle next year. Close up this year.
And that is all I have to report, listen, and there's any questions?
Thank you. Reports from village officers, police report.
You guys are hammer hats, um, I'm not gonna go into defending myself right now because that's not what this is about, but if any of you have any questions at any time, I have an open door, you're more than welcome to come in and I'll sit down and show you what the day consists of. Uh, Officer Argyle had a felonious assault this weekend, gentleman pulled the gun out and pointed it in the guy's face. That guy is now in jail, so she did a great job with that, but this is the kind of stuff we're seeing in Kalcaska, and this is the stuff that our police department, with the size that you've been able to make it, and the officers that are out on the street working, you're dealing with. See the drug arrests, I mean, everything is up, our officers are up, and you're doing great jobs, we have an officer in the school full-time, school is absolutely loving it, it's been a great, um, great relationship with him and them. And they actually call and make sure that we know their schedule, what they got for basketball games, the football games, and they want him there, so he's got a great thing going, Officer Rice has been a great addition, he's out throwing the football with kids and getting to know them at lunchtime, and Officer Argyle's doing the same thing, and. Officer Nagy with Tescas has been extremely busy, other counties, Trevor's Narcotics team, he is requested by other departments because we've got such a great job. So we've really got a good thing going, we've got a great name in the enforcement community. Uh, we've got people in neighboring agencies asking us for jobs, so I just can't honestly picture anything better for our department. Any questions?
I have a question, just, just a curiosity, one that we're asked before, when you use the dog in other counties and districts, do you sound like you're found an exchange, or is there a paid thing?
We have a mutual aid agreement, so we just, we ask for their help, they come, they ask for ours, we go, uh, Officer Sergeant Nagy usually takes his time, his comp time to save the department money. And, uh, it just, it, it works, it works itself out, right now, he's out of town, so, uh, Skylar Stravecchi from Antrim County is available to us, when, if we call him and ask for help, he's coming down to help us. So we've just got a good mutual aid working agreement.
I just wanted to make a comment.
I have one other one. No securities, is that no insurance?
No insurance, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And is he written up before?
Yeah.
Notice we use the reserves, we already put our reserves to work.
Yes.
Out there at the parade.
We were able to do the homecoming parade with no assistance from any of the other, other departments, we have enough people and cars that we can do our own, we didn't have to ask for help. We did, I mean, the sheriff was part of it, we're not saying he can't help, we're just saying we, we're self, we can take care of our own.
Do, do we have a goal for my securities, um? What's the word you just said, the reserve? I know, I used to have a lot of them, I just don't know if there's a goal for that, or?
We're at five right now.
Five?
Not to exceed our officers, I would say.
Okay. Well, I didn't.
We're, 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 yeah. Yeah. Um, and reserve training is, is immense and intense, like, never before. Officer Clark had me sore for three days after baton training, um, I haven't done a lunge in a couple of years, and I sure felt him, I always stand up the next day. Have a day after that, have a day after that.
And I apologize if Officer Clark is listening, that's one I forgot, he's done a ton of work on this reserve program.
Um, yeah, it was super, super intense.
Matter of fact, we even got a large donation from Two by Eight Tire to buy equipment, so our reserves now have bulletproof vests coming of their own, so they're gonna be safe doing the job, they're gonna be in uniforms. Not gonna have external carriers, they will look different than us, and it will. And it will say reserve on their patches, so people understand the difference, but it's, the community is taking care of us.
And that's another thing I want everybody to understand, is that we're not just bringing officers on, we're bringing officers on, and then we're equipping them very well, and giving them vehicles to drive that they need to drive in the northern Michigan winter. We're gonna have the best vehicles for a police force, we're gonna be called upon just because of our vehicles, to go on our police force. And then to have them in proper armor, proper gear, body cameras, I mean, that's all accountability that everybody wants to see right now. With everything that the police are taking from communities, it's really nice to see our community getting to the police, and I really appreciate everybody for that.
Thank you.
Marijuana licensing update. I will do a little bit of that. I can tell you so far fiscal year to date, so that's since March. We have brought in a hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents from the marijuana industry alone, in licensing and inspection fees. And that number seems immense, and to quantify that a little more in ahead, all of our medical marijuana licenses were all based on an annual rotation that started in January. So most of those were already paid for before March started. So to quantify that number, I would have to go back another three months, and I don't wanna do that, let me see what this is all, you're not, no. No, I gotta have a teaser out there for everybody. But just since this fiscal year, it's a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in addition to all of those that were paid in prior to March even starting. So we're doing an incredible job with the industry, they are appreciating everything we are doing for them, making the site plan process smooth, making their inspections move. We have got Todd Hager on now doing those inspections, and he rewrote the inspections, each one has a book about basic so that when we're going in, I not only know that they're doing their business correctly, but they also know that when that state inspector rolls through, they can have the confidence that they've already been inspected by us, we're looking for the same things they're looking for, we're not gonna teeter in a pass or steal inspection, because that's not our place to do, but I can give them the confidence that maybe we can point out a couple of things that they should check out, make sure that their files are in order, the way they're going to be expected to be in order. And that gives me the confidence when I'm out in the store, and somebody comes up to me and says, oh, those evil marijuana people are here. I can say, no, I've actually shook all their hands, and we have inspections to ensure that all of their employees are vetted, have background checks, and are up to snuff on a quarterly basis, they're not sneaking anything by us, so that makes, that makes me happy. Manager, your turn.
Thank you, President, good evening, President, council and audience, so President, you might want to explain why we had to cancel the last, the meeting last Monday.
So we were all ready to go live on Zoom, and at five eighteen, got an email that said that the Michigan Supreme Court struck down the emergency order and also struck down her attempt at extending it through the end of the month. So we had to shut down the meeting immediately, cancel it, and reschedule. So that's why we're here live, and we will take care of now, of course, it's gone through proper channels and legislation, and we have something solid that we can look forward later in the agenda, which will be a resolution to now authorize attending virtual meetings and having those again through the end of December. So this is our one-time, hi, how you doing, everybody, see you later. After this, this, a resolution at the end, if we adopt that, will allow all village meetings to go forward and committee meetings to go forward back into the virtual realm until the end of the year.
President said that, an email came in at five eighteen for a six o'clock meeting, so we had to open it and then cancel it immediately. And I'll reference the most widely read newspaper in Calcasas County. Page one from a very recent issue, Clean Opinion, and the contributing writer noted that that Mr. Berlin, our auditor, said, our opinion was a clean opinion, and that is the highest level of opinion that an auditor can provide on a financial statement. I think we all would wish that the words would be stronger than clean opinion, but clean opinion is as good as it gets for a financial audit for a municipality. So I'd say thank you to the council and to all staff members for working so diligently in the last two years to get us this far. Additionally, on the inside, there was an article regarding the village life-saving award that we made to Officer Clark and Officer and Deputy Beaver with a beautiful picture. Moving on, Lieutenant, I'm gonna call on you here in a second, but let's talk about Dr. Whitney Janka of Bay Area Pet Hospital Hospital and what we did in regard to canine Teska.
Well, I think you should cover that, you made it happen. Go ahead. We did provide CPR and first aid training for all, all our officers in our department, we invited the sheriff's department also. I don't think any were able to come, but we also put it out to the canine training group. Dr. Janka, Jessica?
Janka.
Janka came into our department here, and we went in the back, and she actually went through, pulled CPR, first aid, so if the canine's hurt, this is what we're gonna do, and we did that, so if something happened at Teska, we're prepared, and we also have that to use for family dogs. So it was a great program.
It is such a thing.
It, it's a very informative, it's pretty impressive to me how much it's like human CPR, it's very similar, which really makes sense, I guess, but you don't really think about it. So it was just a good training, and we really appreciate her time coming over, and if you have Facebook, we did post a picture of her and I on the Facebook page that presented her certificate, thank you for her time, and that, how much we appreciate her efforts.
Thank you, LT. So the intent was to provide training and knowledge that our officers could use, if canine Officer Teska is injured in the line of duty. And to just to amplify what Lieutenant Popo mentioned, a moment ago, we covered muscling and injured canine to protect officers. Canine is injured, because she may, of course, lash out or bite someone trying to help her. Opiate overdoses, because Teska's specialty is interdicting drugs, especially opiates. She does that with her nose, and she could easily inhale opiates in a powdered form and overdose. And by the way, we do carry doses of narkin or naloxone. All of our officers do, not only for, for themselves and for citizens that they might encounter who would be in the midst of an overdose, but also for canine Teska. Emergency control CPR choking rescue lifting, environmental emergencies, because she is also a tracking dog. So she gets out in the woods. Antiphylaxis, say she stung by a bee perhaps, and the risk due to vomiting for canines due from intestinal torsion. German Shepherd's and Malinois's are prone to that as well. And the course was well received, as Lieutenant said, and as noted, he delivered a very nice certificate that expressed our appreciation to Dr. Janka. So any questions to Lieutenant regarding that? We treat canine Teska as an valued member of our staff. Next item. After evaluating the present status of our patrol rifles that we provide to our officers, the lieutenant and I directed command staff of DPS to commence a patrol rifle evaluation program. Returning with a recommendation for adoption of a modern, reliable, standard patrol rifle that we will then issue to each officer in this department. That evaluation process has started, it will not be based, I can tell you definitively, it will not be based on lowest cost, or rather ergonomics and the highest level of reliability. A couple of your peers took time to witness one phase of the evaluation trials when they stopped out at our department range, I'm going to show some pictures and pass them around, and I'll offer it, any council member would be able to come out to the range when we continue the evaluation process. So in this picture, you'll see trustee Needham and trustee Miller in the background, President Wales standing off at the very back, while Officer Argyle is providing some instruction, I'll pass it this way. Similar picture, different shot. And the winner of the one thousand meter competition that day was our own Diane and Needham. Well, it might have been a little less than a thousand meters, so.
Go ahead, Sam. Diane, you look like a natural here.
You don't want that, I'm gonna shoot you. And I hit the target.
Certain candidates, and that is actually.
Oh, nice.
You can't get into your work, but.
I can get mine, yeah.
There was the question from an unnamed department, so remember if the walker could be used as a tactical rest, and that is a tactical walker. And in this photograph, you will see Officer John Rice instructing trustee Needham. So who was the first time shooter, or hadn't shot in a long, long, long time? There we go.
And I have to confess, these two nailed the target. Guess what I hit? The bank over there. I, I did not even touch the target, but with the skills that Argyle and Rice learned, they just went to rifle training, within five minutes, they were able to get me in a group, right in the dead center of the target. Just by looking at me, telling me what I'm doing wrong, and correcting it in my head. Now I know how to shoot a long gun, that's wonderful.
I thought you were just trying to save people.
The thing that really surprised me is, because I haven't shot a long gun in a long time since I've been hunting, and I can't even remember what the rifle, the gun that I shot, what type of shotgun I used for hunting, but it nearly knocked me on the ear. These haven't ever kicked. And that just really surprised me to have a rifle this strong, and there, there's no kick. The noise is more, they weren't, they weren't both both the noise, it said the noise will be worse than the kick. And the noise was, the first one nearly knocked your head off, it was such a star, even when you had the headset. But once you've got used to that, but there was actually no kick, I mean, there was no soreness afterwards, no, didn't hit your arm, and and Harley used to say my first shot was the morning shot, but I got it in the shoulder, the next one, right in the heart.
And Officer Rice and Officer Argyle had just returned from rifle instructing course.
It was, it was very interesting.
Well timed, so I'm going to extend that offer to other council members as well, please give me a call, let me know, and we'll reach for you to do it as well. So the next topic, any questions on that? And that's at our own range, by the way. Sledge column, the wastewater treatment plant was delayed by the contractor, I expect it now to occur before the end of this month. And once the tanks are emptied, we'll need to inspect them for condition inside. We released this additional work element for bid, and for obvious reasons, we'll need to proceed with that work immediately after the tanks are emptied. So that additional cost will be approximately eighteen thousand dollars, in addition to the cost of approximately thirty-two to thirty-four thousand dollars for the actual slug column. This is at the wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. Manager, how many gallons will they haul away?
Well, they, I can tell you that the tanks are a hundred feet by fifty feet and twelve feet high overall, so if you do the calculation, I don't have that right in hand, it's a significant amount.
Can I ask a question? How often do they do that?
We, we try to haul sludge yearly.
Every year?
Yes.
So is that at least normal cost?
They are, correct, yes.
And it has to happen.
Well, it must.
So it's just once a year, it's not twice a year?
No, once a year, no.
Cool.
But since the final costs aren't known until we actually haul the product, and you know how much product is being removed, that can only be estimated at this point, so the moral of the story is be advised, we're gonna be proceeding with that necessary work, as Mr. Ellis just pointed out. And these maintenance projects at the wastewater plant, and we'll process those invoices at the November or December meetings. And those costs additionally should be payable from our RRI fund. And as Mr. Ellis asked a moment ago, the tanks are about a hundred feet long, fifty feet wide, and about twelve feet tall, they're made of concrete and they're open to talk. Questions? Test of the four-way stop at Maple and Oak Street, appears to be providing the safety element that we are seeing, I anticipate that the lieutenant will be returning to the next council meeting with a, for a permanent traffic control order. Next topic, Railroad Square, I'm certain everyone has observed that the clock tower is at full height and has both the message center boards and the clock now placed in it. And the Railroad Square project is moving ahead well, paving of Maple Street is complete, and landscaping of the park itself is underway. Next topic, any questions on Railroad Square? Next topic, for clarity, I want to mention that at the last council meeting, I noted that I contacted a VP at Girdle Central Railroad regarding the possibility of not storing tank cars within the village limits, I emphasize not. And as in the past, that request was denied by the railroad, in other words, they'll continue to store railroad tank cars within the village limits, essentially against our wishes, and we've communicated that directly to, to the railroad. Speaking of railroad issues, you might recall that last year, we applied for and received a grant to improve the Hyde Street Crossing, which is right behind Mr. White and Mr. Ellis, that street directly on the other side of the wall. And the railroad's portion of that work is complete, that was paid at the grant cost, and they paved it as well. So we have a smoother railroad crossing at Hyde Street now. And actually, all of the railroad crossings now have been upgraded at one point in the village, so they're all much more passable than in the past, much smoother. Last two items, I asked the clerk and the treasurer to investigate adding additional security to our bank accounts, now that we have online payment options available, and their research revealed a product called, a bank product called debit block, which we are implementing. And very last item, Mr. Larson and I met last week via Zoom to discuss the financial status of the sewer fund, he may have further to report at this time, and I suggest that a public works committee meeting be held before the end of the year. And I ask all council members again, please review your copy of the Barrett Report for context that will be pertinent, and in particular, please review page three of the Barrett Report, if you have any questions, see me, I'll have an answer. So all I have, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Larson, did you have anything that you wanna share with us about your meeting with the sheriffs?
Well. Sewer rate, possible sewer rate increase, but we have to do a sewer rate study. So whoever's gonna be in the Public Water Committee, and look forward to a meeting.
All right, thanks, sir. Moving on, we have no unfinished business. Oh, from my president's report, I will, I will say, I went over and took part in the township meeting this month, and they voiced great concerns over the village-to-city transition. They were very concerned at the way it was being presented to the people, that they were being taken advantage of by the township, and that their taxes are exorbitant, and they would be saving huge amounts of money if they're coming to the city. And I just wanna clarify that that's not the case, and that's not the reason for a transition either. Some of the numbers that we have produced, actually, we have involved a firm, and they have produced, apparently aren't as accurate. Ms. Coons over there was nice enough to share the numbers with me, and it was about half of what we had figured we were paying in over there, so she said it was mid forty thousand dollars that the whole village pays into the township. I couldn't quantify that on my text, luckily, but that was what she said, and she is the treasurer, so I would assume she would know. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that we are, we're getting our money's worth for the township, for the cleanup, for the fire department, but also too, looking forward, if that transition does happen, I don't want them to be left high and dry, but with that forty thousand dollars, I think we probably could come up with a little help for them. In that department, we should have a full-running police department at that point, maybe we could do a fire police swap-up at that point. And the fact that, because we are one-third of the SEV of the township, we own one-third of the township's assets. So we do own one-third of the fire department already as, as a village, going forward as a city. The, part of that transition is an allocation of those assets. So instead of us going in and taking out every third piece of paper and every third chair, and every third whatever, perhaps at that point, there could be some type of a, a nice union that is made, instead of it being such a a fight, I guess, because what, what it seems like it is right now is a fight, and that's not how it should be. And I also wanted to tell them that it's not a quick process, it's not gonna happen overnight, this takes years. It has to go through the boundary commission, after it goes to the boundary commission, you have to write a charter. That's gonna take forever to write a whole new charter for a city, so this is a couple-year-long process, if not longer than that. I don't expect it to happen in five or six months, like it seems like it was presented. But I did wanna say that the whole idea of my government is a transparent government, so the thought that we're talking about it, we're putting it out in the ether, we're starting this idea. So the thought that we're talking about it, we're putting it out in the ether, we're starting this idea. I had to make an announcement that we're talking about becoming a city. And apparently that became, it's happening tomorrow. And we're taking all your money and you're spreading it out. It's basically what they got out of it. So to clarify. Okay, now, new business.
So how did, Mr. Wells, how did, how did they respond to that?
In your meeting notes, it says that they really, really, really appreciated me coming and clarifying everything. We had a very nice time, and I say for the rest of the meeting, we all pumped up those things. Very appreciative. And I actually had documentation from MML, the municipal league, that outlines. I actually sent you those documents. So those documents, I brought, I printed them out real nice and handed those out to everybody so they could go through and see what the transition looks like, what it's looked like for other places in Michigan. And also that little spreadsheet on why they think it's a good idea for that transition to happen. So I think that knowing that it's not coming from a illo place within our council and coming from a higher source within Michigan than legislation that would like this to happen, also kind of set their mind at ease. And knowing that it wasn't a three-month process and that we, you know, we have to get, we have to do a feasibility study before we go forward. But those things that they didn't hear about before, they were very pleased to hear about.
I think like everything else, they heard it. And then when they didn't understand it, when they repeated it to somebody else, it didn't come out the same way as it did when it came out of you by the time it got beyond. I think there's a lot of stretching of the interpretation.
Very personal, I would have to say, and I can completely understand.
I can too.
And I'm sure they totally have a right because that's probably how I would have felt as well. So I just wanted to, over the air. New business, consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty dash zero two one, identification of compliance officer. Yeah, that you got right on top?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
And this again is a resolution that you've read many times. It's no different ones we've had on all the other village employees. It's just including, and we don't have a name specifically on there because that way it'll cover whoever's in that position, whenever we're in that position. We just added that position to that identification. This will now cover the. What are we covering?
My knowledge.
Thank you. My knowledge position, Lofton.
My knowledge.
Science, thank you. Compliance officer.
So that are most.
Yes, I made the motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-one, please.
One second.
Who'd you get it?
Motion by Neil, second by Ellis.
Take her back.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
B, consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero seven to amend the village of Kilkaska zoning ordinance to rezone property. That property rezoning is in your packet. Can we get a motion on the floor to discuss?
And how was it?
Can we get a motion and a second on the floor so we can discuss? Motion by Neil?
Second by Ellis.
Second by Ellis. All right, what was your question?
Let's go.
Is that, that's the property over here where one of the companies is?
No, this is the property we sold on S six. It used to be long ago.
North S six.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Yep. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes, certainly. Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero eight, regulating parcel division and property transfers.
Move.
One second.
Motion by Neil, support by Tim, and discussion.
Is this a change in the one we've had before?
It's, it's.
In it. To make a lot?
Consistent with state law.
Okay. I was going to look in the book for it, and I never had a chance to compare it to the old.
Thank you.
At this point, we trust state law, so we know the difference.
Sorry for my dishonesty. All right, well, if it's bringing us up current and if it is, we have to do, and this was produced by our village attorney to bring us up to date with state laws, I think we probably should have a vote.
Certainly. White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
B, consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty dash zero two two, hard cap compliance with public act one fifty-two of two thousand eleven.
So move.
Support. Motion and support. Do we have any discussion? I think we've covered this. No discussion. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who was the, the motion made, please?
Needham.
No, I didn't make it.
White did, sorry. You supported?
I supported.
Neil is supported.
Needham supported, got it. And I'll take a little call vote. Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes. Designate hours for trick-or-treating in the village. Well, surprised we're going to have Halloween, not Halloween in the village this year, folks. On the right day. And just as a little difference this year, since everybody needs to be spaced out, and I noticed the trunk retreats are also maybe doing drive-through trunk retreats instead of everybody kind of congregating. I'm going to make it a little longer this year. I think it should start at four-thirty and go till nine, which will allow for that slower procession, not only from door to doors. People are trying to work and figure out how they're going to do this in the middle of the pandemic. And I think that giving people extra time just kind of sounds like a good idea. When you run out of candy, turn your lights off, folks. Are we going to do any going through the candy? Do we still do that? Is that outdated?
Oh, we're not about that long.
So there, therefore, is my declaration.
What are you looking at?
Four-thirty to nine.
Four-thirty.
You're at school, each has your own.
It makes sense that can't have more than one kid, that they're one family at a time on your stuff, so.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be, I don't want people to hear. I want it to be fun and safe, so I think that's a great idea. Also, if you feel as though you should go to Michigan back up, go search Halloween and actually have some really cute ideas on how to make it a safer Halloween. Maybe setting up your yard with tables and ghosts and scary people out there and having the kids walk through as opposed to handing the candy directly to them. There's a lot of cute ideas that you should check it out. Moving on, consider amendments to village personnel manual, imager. Well, let's get a motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
Court.
Motion by Miller, support by Needham. Man.
Two changes. One at the, at the end of the manual is in regard to education policy, a policy that supports and fosters furthering the education by our employees. And the other change is a change in regards to the amount of PTO or sick time and vacation time that an employee can carry over and providing the option for an employee to be able to purchase down some of their PTO two times a year.
These are things we've already talked about before, isn't it?
Yes, the education policy in particular.
Aaron, you have to foster the education policy. Do you want to speak about it?
The, the big idea is we have a couple of employees who are actually going back to school currently, or actually can rule at this time. Faith is going back for her bachelor's in, I don't know, the public administration, something that's related to the village, something in that field. And then Elizabeth just signed up for accounting classes, which is two good things that are the future of the village and the continuity of government. And it, and now Elizabeth is actually our deputy treasurer. She's there working with Valerie, so if something Valerie can't complete the job, we've already got someone trained that can step in for her. It's just, it's an investment in our future.
And they get back to the village afterwards, too.
Absolutely.
And there's a high standard. You don't just get free money. You have to make in certain grade. There's all kinds of standards built into it.
So for so many years.
Policy with the hospital has, and retention afterward. And two, that goes back with the continuity of government. Who better to go to school for city administrator than the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer going for accounting? Those just seem like logical things that you would like to help facilitate. And I'm glad that we will be able to do that. Any more discussion on those items?
So this is, you don't take it college course, you turn the thing in, but you got to pass the course in order to get reversed.
Yes.
And you have to have prior approval to make sure the class is actually relevant to your employment in the village.
You got to have a class related to your job.
Correct. We're not looking to make someone a doctor that can go somewhere else.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Roll call, please.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-three, authorizing street closure for Christmas in Kilkaska parade. Can I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
I will second it.
Motion by White, second by Miller. And I just start off discussion, have a letter to read in.
Do you have time?
Pardon?
Do you have time for the parade or no?
It's, it's in the request.
Yeah.
I don't, it's for the, the slide, but he's already trying to.
No, this is for the parade. It's from six-thirty to seven-thirty, requesting the shutdown. This is from Debalo Day and Katina Banco. We completely understand if the village would rather that we not hold the parade this year, Saturday, December fifth. It'll be a single day, only on Saturday. But we want you to know that it is our intention to advise social distancing for spectators and include social distancing and other guidelines on the parade application for participants. If allowed to proceed, we are not planning on face-to-face seminars or the serving of hot cocoa and cookies after the parade this year. We're also seeking consent for the bonfire before and during the parade. Although we understand if it is decided that there not be a bonfire, it may be difficult to have social distances occur in such a small area. As I am typing this, I realize we would need to know what location would be available for a bonfire, and that will be a factor in having one or not. So needs to know the village is planning on a ceremony for tree lighting at six-thirty that evening also. We appreciate considerations, Debalo Day, Katina Banco, the co-chairs. Would we like to discuss this?
I've never thought about the tree lighting. A lot of people are interested in it, too. If we do, who's going to monitor the social distancing and stuff? As much as I'd love to see it happen, and I think that's kind of the things in Kilkaska people in Florida. I know water is already, it's totally good, and they're, they're, you know, how it's all good stuff. CDC stuff right now, so we had, we had already pulled out.
Do you think we would be okay if we didn't have a speech, didn't do the normal talk at the beginning, lift the tree and started the parade?
Mm-hmm.
And let that proceed on its own? And then they're going to disseminate how fast the municipal market around the corner. And people gathering, I don't really see people crowded out.
Well, it's one of these times we pray for it to be cold enough that germs will begin.
They're probably holding. Have your clothes covered and everything else covered.
Where would we be fired?
I think that's going to be a very difficult solution now.
I don't know that we can.
I think we've kind of developed ourselves out of that, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless it was in the parking lot.
Well, and people tend to get very close with that, too, because they are cold, and they don't get warm, and.
Well, and it is one of those gatherings that probably would be a scrutinized, not a good thing.
Yeah. And I think, I think that idea of the tree lighting, we start the parade right away and go from there, I think it'd be good to let them do it, but I think we have a.
So if this is authorization, Angie, if we do pass it, can you craft a letter in our responses on what we will and will not be allowing along with this?
Certainly.
Any more discussion?
Do we need a motion on that? I mean, and what we're going to do?
Motion and second, right?
Just, this is all we're doing right now.
Yep, but she's going to send them the rules that we're sending along with this approved. So I guess we're ready for a roll call. Do we need a roll call?
Um, no, I don't think so.
All those in shavers?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Here is, no opposals, thank you. H, consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero nine to amend the village of Kilkaska zoning ordinance to rezone property. Now, we see several of these coming up on the agenda here, Angie. Do you have an explanation of what these are appearing for, or is this something I should make Scott explain?
Um, I, I do. I mean, if Scott would like to provide that explanation, but I do have that explanation.
Housekeeping. Housekeeping. So these are things that have made it all the way to the point of being approved by the village. They made it through the planning commission, and then for some reason, never made it onto an agenda. And as, as we do, clean up our ways, we found that there were several of these that didn't make it to this point. We conferred with the attorney. He said, well, there's no shelf life on that. So we go ahead and put them on this agenda and make everything, and a lot of these things have already taken place. And we're really kind of just doing some housekeeping on things that should have been. So on this first one, motion and second would be needed.
I'll make a motion.
Support. Motion and support.
What is this one on, six twelve?
That's, that's the property behind our.
Oh, oh, that makes sense, okay.
Any other discussion?
You might add, President, that these were, as you get, that these were all reviewed by the planning commission previously with the recommendation to the council.
Yep, these are all recommended. A roll call, yes?
Um, yes, and I'm sorry, I believe I had Miller for the motion, and who is the second, please?
Me.
Diana.
Diana.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Larson.
Larson?
Motion. Oh, that's great. Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Thank you. Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Carries.
Consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero ten to amend the village of Kilkaska zoning ordinance to rezone property. Seven thirty-one, self-sty.
Be good motion.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by White, second by Ellis. Any discussion on this one? No discussion? Go ahead with the roll call, please.
Certainly. Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Whales? Whales?
Yes.
Carries.
Charlie, we should thank Angie for including the minutes of the meeting.
I know, isn't that nice?
The planning commission would have been.
Thank you, Angie, for including the minutes of the meeting where we appropriately have the planning commission. That was very helpful. Just double check. Quick to double check and very thorough. Thank you. Consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eleven to amend the Village of Kilkaska zoning ordinance to rezon property.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Miller. Support by Larson. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
I will proceed into roll call. Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Carries.
Will, um, housekeeping. Consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one two to amend Village of Kilkaska zoning ordinance to rezon property.
So moved.
Motion by White?
Support.
Support all around the room. Uh, Needham, I think, was first. Any discussion on this one? Roll call.
Okay. White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yeah.
Needham?
Yes.
Whale?
Yes.
Carries.
Consider recommendation from Brownfield, Ray Development Authority, to terminate Brownfield plan at the former Cornell's Crossing building. So, uh, well, let's get motion on the floor.
I'll make the motion.
Motion.
I would.
Motion by Miller, second by Alice. Sure. Whatever. Um, and I just have a brief explanation. There was a Brownfield plan for the area behind Cornell's. Um, clearly the developer is clearly not going forward with that plan, um, and is not interested in that. There is a process where the Brownfield applies for things, it applies for grants, and doesn't get them, doesn't get them. Um, the last reason they were told was because they've never had an application, well, it's hard to do when you don't get one. This was a plan that they had in place, and we're hoping that by ending it, even canceling it, will actually make their.
Jumpstart it?
Jumpstart them on that grant plot process. And having one, that they went through the process, it didn't work out, but they went through the process. So hopefully their next application, which will go in, um, will be more successful. Yes. So, motion accepted. Can we just, can I just do this one? All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Any opposed? Carries. Consider adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero one three, amendment to village REU schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by White? Support by Bishop.
I got in there.
We have any discussion? No discussion? Uh, roll call on this one, please.
Certainly. Bishop?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Carries.
Well, it's nice being seen, y'all, but consider adoption of resolution twenty twenty dash zero twenty-four, authorizing remote attendance of village.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion by White, support by Needham. Any discussion? Peace out, folks.
Actually, I would like to discuss something real quick that kind, that kind of goes with this. Um, the Facebook live feed for this meeting has died. I can see that my screen has changed on that telecommunication device. So they're telling me there's low battery. But the entire meeting has been posted through our, the Village of Kilkaskas YouTube right now, which you can link to and watch directly. That camera feed, the, the YouTube, nice and crisp, the audio works great on it. And we're getting complaints that the phone was not working, which was the same way as was when Jenny was coming into doing them. This would have worked out better today. Unfortunately, all three microphones that were purchased for broadcasting from this room are not functioning. We don't know why. So during the part that we're under COVID rules and broadcasting from home, I will figure out what's going on with this, if it's working right for when we tend to meet and not be thirty feet apart from each other with masks on, trying to talk through a phone.
Also, on that same note, those Zoom meetings, I'm no longer able to launch them live on Facebook. Um, my format does not match their format any longer. Same on Facebook. Um, so we will be posting the Zoom invites, and everyone is invited to join the meeting. I will have it set up so your camera and your speaker is turned off when you join in, so you can do it in the comfort of your home without worrying about your cat sitting on your lap or your children pulling your head. Um, and you can then chime in if you want to participate. Um, there is a hand raise feature along the bottom of the screen. You can raise your hand, and then I can let you in to speak. And that was also how public comment will work. There is a chat feature on there as well, the little icons at the bottom. Find the chat feature. Um, and you can type your message, and I can read that then in, um, during the public comment portions. And of course, uh, as well, at H W A L D S at kilkaskavillage.com. You can always send me an email prior to, and I can read in public comment as well.
Okay, so the, the calendar that you normally are?
We will be, but it will not be streamed live on to Facebook. They will be joining in and be part of the gallery as well.
I missed that, I'm sorry.
Uh, there is a feature that I haven't played with where non-video participants can be pushed off to a corner so that we are just looking at each other and don't have forty-two, um, on the screen. I'm not sure how that works, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna try. Um, when we're, when we're allowed to do it.
Thank you.
Do we need a roll call on this, or just, uh?
I think yes. I would like to take a roll call. Okay. Ellis?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Needham?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Whales?
Yes.
Carries.
Again, we have a spot for brief public comment. You're gonna hold it provided. Please state your name, place of residence, and disclose any financial relationship with the Village of Kilkaskas. Direct all comments towards myself and limit to three minutes or less. I do not have any public comment from the email.
Do not have any public comment from the YouTube feed, and the only public comment from the Facebook feed was, can't hear you.
Excellent. Any public comment?
I just wanted to say it was nice to see that little noted here on Kylie Arag.
Oh, yes.
He just wants somebody got a ticket. They were willing to, got stopped by you. They sent us a thing telling us what a good and professional job you did. That was very nice. Thank you for doing that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Makes us look good, too.
Yeah, they do. Don't take oops.
Can I see your copy, please? I forgot to show it to Officer Agao. Or someone that had to hand you?
It's just a little photograph on page.
That's right here.
Can you see comment?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yay.
All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Have a great night, everybody.
Hey.
Do you have everything you need for me? Do you have everything you need for me?
Can I show my notes?
Sign in sheet on your desk and call it back.
Thank you very much.
What was the paper? Oh, no, that's the book, yeah.
Look, he's pictures next to him.
He recognized. Scott's nothing bad.
Thank you.